Call the meeting to order. This is a regularly scheduled Greer City Council meeting. Call convened on September 24, 2013. Being duly assembled, I'd like to ask Councilman Wayne Griffin, if he would, to pronounce our dedication, please.
Let's pray. Hallelujah to the gentlemen in heaven. Hallel be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done. Father God, once again, a few of your homeless servants can come on the holy and righteous name. I want to say thank you, Father. Thank you, Father, for any wonderful blessings that you bestowed upon us, for truly you've been better than us than we've been since our fail. Father God, thank you for allowing us to live in a country such as the United States of America. It's a country where we're free to worship you, Father God, but it's also a country where we don't have to worship you. We don't want to, Father God, and we thank you for that, too. If you would, Father, come and join us in this meeting. Lead, guide, direct. Be thou who blesses your expressed sin, just Christ's name. Amen.
With that, then, we'll move to items of force in public forums. It's an opportunity to address issues that are before the council in the meeting this evening, and we had a number of folks that would like to speak to council. In that regard, then, I'll go down the list as we get to the names as they're listed. If you would, rather than calling a time limit here before we get started, you'll be cognizant of the facts that we do have a number of people that would like to speak. We will honor your request to speak, and you will honor us by keeping it to the length that would be appropriate to allow everybody to speak this evening. With that, then, we will move on to the public forum and Clay Andrews, who is with the Upstate Alliance, wants to bring greetings and update on regards to the efforts the Upstate Alliance is making in our area. And with that, I'm going to ask Clay, if he would, to come to the podium. Welcome, Clay. Clay, happy with us this evening and look forward to hearing what's going on in the world of the Upstate Alliance and how you may be able to help you.
Thank you very much. It's great to be here, and I just want to cancel now because there are a couple of comments before, but come back to say hello and thank you again for the investment you make with the Upstate Alliance. We are always looking out for projects that can benefit this area and helping upstate the rest of the world. And we recently completed, of course, the first half of the year. I thought I would just come and share with you that so far to date, we have had quite a year compared to previous years. We've already had 53 people to come and visit us on ground here looking for a specific location for a new company to locate. And if you somebody has just the tactics to get there, we do have an outside call service that we help use to help us cover more ground quickly. And we have already seen over 10,000 calls made this year in an effort to get to the point where we can get those 53 people here. We have 567 companies currently in our pipeline, which includes everybody from companies that are looking right now to companies who have told us two or three years out that they'll need something. And so all this so far this year, we have seen close to a half a billion dollars, about $488 million of announcements this year for new capital investment in this region, and that's resulted in announcements of about 1,575 jobs. Not as good as last year when both Nissan and BMW announced major expansions, but it's still on track to be a year that's better than average. So obviously, we represent all corners of the upstate, and we're excited to see anytime somebody comes here. And we are out there looking after you every day and we'll continue to do so. We've got several shows coming up later this year. We'll be traveling around the world. We've got a show coming up in Great Britain we'll be going to. We've got a trip to Asia planned for later this year. We just got back home with the largest auto motor show in the world in Germany. So we're out there every day trying to find companies in our target areas. We appreciate all the support that you give us. If you have any questions or anything you'd like to, I don't know if I can answer, but I'll try.
You're precious. I'm Mr. Clark. We appreciate all that you are doing on our behalf and working closely with Mr. Deacon, who is his director. You know, it's important, and I know you folks work hand in hand, and we thank you for that and for this, if you're making on our behalf.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. We'll move to the other folks that would like to address council this evening in the forum as part of the meeting. Looks like that we have a number of folks that would like to speak in regards to zoning issues that weigh ahead of us and are in the agenda, and I will try my best to sort of balance that out as we move through this portion of the meeting. And so I'd like to ask Mayor Williams, if he would, to open discussion this evening. And so the podium's yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Daner. Members of Greer City Council, we really am honored and humbled to be here speaking before you tonight. Last Monday, a week ago, we met here before the planning and zoning board. They reviewed a property in our neighborhood that the owner or the representative of the owner requested to zone to commercial C2. This property is completely surrounded by residential properties, and we were opposed to that. And the plan, your planning and zoning board voted humanely to deny that zoning request. And as it turns out, this property has been zoned residential since its coming to the city in 1912. Over 100 years this property has been residential, although it has been granted a non-conforming use since the late '50s or early '60s. And they've enjoyed this non-conforming use in the residential neighborhood, and it's been a quiet office setting, and they have been good neighbors. Recently, they've abandoned that property. It's been empty for some time now. It's on the market along with nine other properties within about a four-block section of West 26th Street, and they would like to zone that commercially. I mentioned to the board, reminding mine, that a couple of years ago, the Greenville, Greater Greenville Association of Realtors awarded Erin and I a pretty prestigious award. And I bring this up because it demonstrates our commitment not only to Greer and the neighborhood, but to you and the downtown. And we won the revitalization award in the residential division. All of Greenville County, those that revitalized a home, the Greater Greenville Board Association of Realtors chose our home in the residential division because they said that we did a pretty good job of renovating this old home that was once dilapidated. And the credit goes to Erin. She did much more in that regard than I did. But aside from the refurbishing of this old house, they said that we established a stronghold in the neighborhood and that we allowed other people that maybe formed a commitment as well, like Jim and Nancy Brown, that recently bought a house that was commercial. This is right, this is one house down from the property in question. Jim and Nancy bought a house that had been commercial, had been the tea room, and they want to live there because they want to live on West 26th Street. Frida and Greg Hall, directly across the street from this property, chose to buy a house and live in downtown Greer as a residence. This Annie Sullivan, directly beside them, also directly across from this property. She's been living there many years. She's made a commitment. Josh and his wife and two kids, directly behind this property, just moved in, just moved in this month, and they want to raise their kids there. Marty Leo moved down from New York because he wanted to get out of the city and he wanted to live in a residential area. His property is just across James Avenue. This property is completely surrounded by residential use. Now, you probably don't like the commercialism. I don't think anybody would, although it's less flooded than you tried. But maybe you're leaning towards office development. But I assure you, it is just as almost, and if you look at the list of businesses that can go in there, maybe there's one that would like to try it and it might not make it. Then this opens the door for any kind of office development, and there's a long list and permitted time. My wife Erin and others would like to speak concerning some of those uses that could be used in this residential area. But I ask you to prayerfully consider keeping this residential area on West 26th Street residential and uphold your planning and zoning board's unanimous decision to deny the zoning request. Thank you very much.
Mr. Randy Bracken?
Please, Pastor Kenneth, please.
Sure, you signed up. Reverend Keith Keller?
Mayor Daner, members of City Council. I was thinking on the way over here, January 1961, 1961, 37 years ago, your own home, plus a whole lot more. Not even close to 37. 37 was just a number I felt like coming over here. 52 years is more realistic. That building has been an office. And the only thing we're asking, as the newly deployed Tree Rivers Baptist Association, of which I am grateful to God to be a part of, is that it continue to have the opportunity to be an office. Every year since 1961, it has been inspected by a fire marshal as a business. With all due respect to what Harry shared, and he made some great, great points, I thought that, or you really don't think, that allowing this building to continue to be a business, an office at the most, is going to cause us to compete with New York City. We're not going to lose that downtown feel and that downtown flair, but we will give the folks who are moving into this city an opportunity to not even have to leave the city, but to do business in this city in the tradition that we have. Thank you so much for the privilege to live here as a citizen. Thank you for the privilege to pastor here as a local church. And thank you for the privilege to just stand up here tonight and share with you, regardless of whichever way you go. It's pretty awesome to live in a country where we can do this. Thank you so much.
Ms. Erin Williams, coming in here.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. It's a beta newcomer. I've only lived here since 1989. We bought our house in 1991, and it was right before BMW announced they were coming. Greer was very sleepy downtown, and nothing happened. Soon as they bought their land and announced traffic picked up, you wouldn't believe the amount of people unless you've lived here. Since that time, our downtown is thriving. We've got an architectural review board. The city council has been diligent to pass codes to regulate this tremendous explosion of growth through annexed law property. Things have changed since 1950. I think it's wonderful that the Greer Baptist Association was able to receive that property and to operate out of there, but now they're gone. They've been gone, and I do believe possibly more than the 90 days that is renovated by the code. It says that once a property is not occupied, if it's a nonforming property and not occupied and that use is no longer being used, that they lose their right to operate as nonconforming entity than that property. That's my first point. I think they've lost that status. Second point, my husband, whenever they're measured, the property is too close to the boundary to comply with commercial setback laws. I believe it's 15B is required, and he said that he measured it, and it's 60. That's number two point. There are a lot of points like that. The building is not up to code with regard to a lot of things. The owners, and I don't want to say anything negative, but we were very dismayed that they went out several months ago when they decided to put the property up for sale. They went out and just cut a bunch of trees, those shrubs. We have several provisions in our code that regulates the petting of trees in an effort to beautify our city and provide trees and shrubs for the beauty of the city and the air quality. And unfortunately, because they went out there and cut them, we've lost them. The code also requires for C2, which is what they were seeking last week, hedge or some sort of barrier between residential properties. That's not compliant. It's got six foot to the property line, and there's no hedge. Erin and I have lived there since 1991. We have resisted that pretty much with respect to some activity on the property that although it was in the residential area, was very unattractive to us to have to see these big emergency shower trailers. We didn't want to rock a boat, but it was noncompliant with the neighborhood. And it's an ice storm. We have spent a great deal of time and effort in our home. We raised our four kids there. There were lost families in neighborhood who had the same story. This is our home. We would like to maintain this residence. And it's very upsetting to us to think that last week they wanted to have us zone C2. If it was zoned office, which is what I heard through the rumor mill that this is what they now wish to, it could be an bank. There's a list. I don't know how many of you know us on the list, but let me see if I can find it. Thank you, pardon. A banker's statement to loan, advertising agency, broadcasting studio, brokerage house, employment agency, insurance company, a nursing home, or assisted living facility, which of course would be a lot of traffic, professional offices, that's plural, real estate research facilities, and any accessory buildings. That would mean not just the one building, but additional buildings could be placed Other uses that would be permitted by special exception, once they got a zoned office to go in, that could include a cemetery, a child peer center, a church, educational institution, exhibition buildings, a fire station, a hospital, a library, post office, a school. Unless this, you know, being a resident Greer, I love being here. I'm thrilled to be downtown. My children walk the streets downtown. They've walked to the library, post office growing up. We even walked school occasionally when our car broke down. I just think it's wonderful, and I'd like to see Greer continue in the way it has with having code, paying attention to landscaping, architecture, and encouraging people to come in. Every property around the subject property is residential, and we just hope that you will respect the wishes of the planning and zoning board, which voted unanimously. They saw the presentation, which Mr. Pace presented, all the maps. They had the opportunity to look at the adjoining properties and to see, you know, and really consider what would be involved and what we would lose as residents. And they voted unanimously to deny. And one of them said, "I'd never not go along with a request." And he said, "This is the first time," but I think it's important. I just asked him to uphold their decision, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Reverend, you signed up. I'll offer you an opportunity to speak if you'd like.
Thank you, Mayor. City Councilman, I'm Randy Bracken. I'm the executive director of the Greer Baptist Association. This is a new association that came about from Greer Baptist Association and approved the Greater Greenville Baptist Association. In May of this year, set a lot of it on the leadership level. We come together and make one association. It comes from 85 churches. That's what we're doing. In the process, we've been very blessed. Now we have a couple of facilities, a facility out here on 1st Street that we're still using, that we do have equipment in there that we're going in and out, and we have our phone set up, and so it's a facility that we're using right now. And this thing started in 1961 when Brooklyn Inn came together to rent. I prayed about where they had the offices for the Greer Baptist Association. This place was just perfect. The plan that was drawn and paid for was thoroughly brought out. Those are the churches of the Greer Association approved by the Greer administration here and never in any form. Let's say I just took that residential facility. It was all the way with business facility. You were going to our office there on 1st Street, and this is office, the way the office is set out, the building, the room to there. This is an office building. The restroom's right in the hall there. It resembles nothing of a residence for someone that wants to live there. I came in and began to look at the city, because I passed the post office on 1st Street, and passing there, all of the homes had been transformed into office buildings. This is not a home that's transformed into office building. This is an office building made for that purpose, and that's what's been used since 1961. Had we come here, we had the foresight to come here and realize that we didn't have the office district zoned, and I asked you folks 10 years ago, or even five years ago, or even two years ago, for office district zoned to do celestial stamps. That's what you folks have done. We stamped that, and that's what we have. The city didn't ask you to do that because that's what this area is for. We worry about putting something else in that land there. The land is not even given a whole lot of, you know, there's a lot of site that's there now, but the building, the building was set up for an office. We do believe that in all fairness, if you look up and down the street there, there are other buildings, there are offices in that same area. Their places are parallel or right next to where our office building is with the commercials on, the one that we turned down for. And that's fine. I understand that. In my neighborhood, I live in a house that doesn't have commercials on. But I do believe this situation here because of Greer Baptist Association facility, that building had been used from 1961 until this very day. It has been used to nothing but offices. And we've had office hours from eight to five o'clock in front of the Monday through Friday. We've had Saturday meetings, we've had Sunday meetings. We've used that area there as a ministry and the Greer area, and not only in South Carolina, but other states in the United States and parts of thousands of groups in America. So it's an office building that knows what it means to be used as an office building. And I ask you that you would prayerfully consider to give us that reservation that is owned, so it could be what it's always been for the past 52 years and 80. Thank you for expressing my opinion on that and my point of view, or the other folks, or just four people who live in the place and come in here and share what we have to say, and those who take into consideration. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. And the last speaker that we have that signed up to speak this evening would be Mr. Hall.
Thank you very much for giving me the time to speak. I'm not a wonderful speaker. Could jump around a little bit, and I'll do my best. I think, just listening to this gentleman, last week, we were talking about defiying that property in the back and perhaps building a residential home back there, so we're a little bit confused about that. I think the main thing, Greg and I bought this home, it's not historic, although we had, like, one of the students that lived there, everybody knew it was about the brown house. We spent a lot of money, never thinking for one minute that we may have to look across the street to a car wash or a car lot or, you know. I have no problem, like I said last week, with this place being a bookstore, but then I'm thinking, if this bookstore doesn't, if it isn't commercial, if this bookstore didn't make it, then what would this could be there? I mean, what would we be looking at? So I just think that, I lived here, lived Fort Norton for 10 years, came back, and this is where we decided to live. We bought this home, beautiful home, I think. It's a gateway to downtown Greer. I know, I think my problem is with this, there's so many empty places, commercial places that you could have a business. They're empty in places like mine. And I don't understand why somebody would want to put that in the middle of our residential homes, we're trying so hard to stay with them. You know, all the homes behind this, you know, it's just, it's just sad to me. I don't, you know, I think Greer, because Greg and I own property in downtown Greer four miles away, Fort Greer has taken five steps forward and then knocked back ten. And I think they're finally, finally doing really good. I think there's actually places opening on 1st Street that could be rented. And why I try to this in the middle of residential is curious to me. And I'm a little bit confused because last week, they were saying that you couldn't, after they, you know, actually, you know, not that they stayed, they were not done with commercials, then it would take a year for, to rezone or to come back for a hearing to rezone, and now we're just here a week later. And maybe somebody could zone it out. I'm a little bit confused about that. But that's just, I'm not sure of them, but thank you very much.
All right, council, that's all the people that we had sign up for our public forum session this evening. We thank you for taking the time and giving us the inspiration to, you know, the issues that we will have to attend sometime later on in our meeting tonight, and thank you for giving us that overview. Always important for us to have both sides of the story. With that, then, we'll move to departmental reports. You have convened, in your fact, a number of legislative reports and updates for the month of August, and then we'll ask Mr. David Sykes, if he would give us the financial activity report, please, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're pleased to present the August 31st monthly budget report. At that time, we have year-to-date revenue, reported of $594,870. The year-to-date expenditures of $2,443,429. That expenditure amount carried with us a 3% under budget. To reference the dashboards, on the revenue side, we have a negative variance of $15,222. On the expenditure side, we have a positive variance of $8,333. That is combined negative variance of $6,939. And then for the period ending on 31st, we have a cash balance of $3,699,221. If you have any questions, we can ask.
Council question, Mr. Sykes. As always, Mr. Sykes will be there to help you with anything in that report that may be of value or assistance to you, as well as Mr. Sells or Mr. Green. Thank you, sir. In my haste to hear this report, in light that we had a $3 million balance there, I jumped right into the minutes of the council meeting from September 10th. So we will back up. I entertain the motion to recede the minutes of the council meeting from September 10th, 2013. So have a motion second. Any items of note to the clerk? Here you are, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Yarwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Dunham?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Halbert?
Yes.
Mayor Dunn?
Yes.
We are just thanking time to recognize special employees. And we do that by recognizing, recognizing years of service, and occasionally every time. And this evening, we want to express our appreciation to the ones that is retiring. And let's see, Harold, Harold, if you'll join me across here. And then you've got a number of family members. Any of your family members that want to come, come on up. They've got, they're gonna lock there on their first. This is a certificate of appreciation, which says, "Congratulations on your retirement from the City of Greer. Presented an appreciation of ten years of dedicated service in the City of Greer, September twenty-ninth, two thousand and three, to September twenty-seventh, two thousand and thirteen. Harold Rhodes, given this today in the City of Greer, twenty-fourth day of September. Harold, I'll offer you that. Thank you for your service." Don't get me around the clock. Harold works in our public services department. And if you have, have been benefited from street supplies while it was snowing, or had the tree cut up in the road after a hard rain or a storm, or you have had an issue with garbage collection or trash pickup, or hot load, or any of those things. These are the kinds of guys that make this city run. They are the people that you don't typically see in a meeting like this. They are the people that you, that you don't typically see, other than the fact that when they're out working. But they are the backbone of this community, and they are the engine that drives this city. And it is folks like Harold and his crews that are truly the unsung heroes of the City of Greer. And to give some special recognition in that regard, we've got a guest we'd like to give, if Wayne Will assisted in handing this over, did you pick it up? So that's, oh, my God.
Just I want to thank all the council and Mr. Greer's man here. He's a guy I like. He is a truly honest man, and he works well with everybody. I've had experience working almost forty-two years with public service, ten years here in Greer, and he has been backbone, helps this city motivate. And I wish you all knew as well as I do that he puts his best foot forward. He's been there day and night. Sometimes we just can't believe at four o'clock, where do you get a phone call saying, "I just forgot, but should you do this?" I bet you this morning, you just go and do it now. I thank you all.
Y'all thought Harold was kidding, but he was. That's what I mean about the backbone of this city. Those guys were the ones that, you know, it's amazing. We have festivals down town, pretty strict, so the areas down town, I don't know if y'all think so, because when I get to church on Sunday morning, I have to go right through that area down town. There is not a fraction of the streets after one of those events. It's probably got to go out at two, three, or four o'clock in the morning, making sure that our residents are clean. Nick Stegall, come up here and join me there. Nick Stegall is shortly to retire as our Executive Director of the Greer Commission of Public Works. And we want to recognize his service. Nick has been with us since two thousand and nine. And I think that probably just barely qualifies to get a picture on the wall up there. But I've had that kind of a hundred-year history, a little bit of third or fourth, what was that job? A lot of work over us there. So Nick has done a wonderful job in bringing us to where we are, and we certainly want to wish him the best in retiring until we'd like to offer him a proclamation in the fifth of July. And this says that, "Whereas the City of Greer joins a strong partnership with the Greer Commission of Public Works to enhance the quality of life for businesses and citizens of Greer, and whereas Nick Stegall has served as General Manager of the Greer Commission of Public Works since two thousand and nine, whereas he honed his skills in the City of Rockville, South Carolina, as the Utility Director for thirteen years, and is the Public Services Administrator managing the Utilities and Public Works Department, but the City Manager of the Utilities Director for Camden for two years, and has worked for the South Carolina Electric and Gas Company. And whereas he has served the Greer Community by serving on the boards of the Greer Development Corporation, the regular Greer Chamber of Commerce, partnership with the Mark Board of Trustees, and the Village Hospital Advisory Board. And whereas he has also chaired its time of task with other boards, including the American Waterworks Association, and the American Public Power Association, the FCA, WWA, Water Utilities Southern Division, and the P. Lockamissable Power Agency, and is the past President of the South Carolina Association of the Nissel Power Systems. And whereas he has recently announced he is stepping down from the Greer Commission of Public Works after serving the commission and the community for four years. Now therefore, let be resolved, the City of Greer expresses its deepest thanks to Nick for his efforts and dedication to creating a higher quality life for citizens of Greer, and wish him all the best for a happy and healthy retirement. Join me in congratulating Nick Stegall for his service in the City of Greer in his upcoming retirement." I've advised me of a lot of meetings out there. We appreciate the support we've received from all citizens of Greer. One of the clerks, Liam, love to see the partnership between the city and the commission. Great support from you, Mayor. We appreciate all of the, thank you. With that, then we'll move to the Assistant City Administrator's Report. Mike Sell is filling in for Ed Riggers, our Assistant Administrator, while he is away on business. And so that's quite for yours.
Thank you, Mayor. This time of year, Mr. Riggers, usually where he is now is in attendance at the annual ICMA conference in Boston. We've been hearing from emails from him throughout the week, and it's pretty apparent that he's getting a lot of good ideas and a lot of good information to bring back to the city. As always, he does pick up a lot of things that, that we can apply to our organization. One of the things that ICMA does is help leaders of municipalities become better leaders by giving them information about things that are currently going on in the environment that can be used, that can be applied for the issues that cities are facing today. It's pretty timely, a lot of things that, that we talked about in our recent staff retreat and things that we'll be taking a look at in your upcoming council retreat in the, in this winter. Our performance management, that's a big issue that, that is being dealt with right now and something all organizations take a look at, and there's a number of sections that's pending in regards to that. And also another item that, that has become an important factor in our organization that we're concentrated on, and that's organizational ethics. And so there's a lot of good information, and we look forward to him coming back and sharing with us some new ideas and things that we can use for our organization. In regards to the administrative report, there are a few items I'd like to bring to your attention. One of them, as you recall, last week, we had our employee benefits fair, another good success. I've heard a lot of comments from, not only from the vendors, but from the employees, that this was one of our, this is one of our bests that we've had. We had a number of vendors that were there, providing a lot of good information for our employees. And the K and N centers where the event was held, it seemed to work real well for us. Hopefully you were able to get down there. I know I saw a number of you there, be able to take advantage of the services that we're providing. Just as a reminder, for, in that regard, our open enrollment closes on October thirty-first, so you should have been given your information that needs to be filled out once a year during this period, and that just needs to be turned in by the thirty-first. Also, last week, on that same day, as a matter of fact, we had a Greer Development Corporation held a business appreciation luncheon out at Gateway Business Park, another good success. About a hundred and forty employees from the businesses that are located in that industrial park were able to take place within that. A number of you were able to make it out there, as well as a number of staff from the city. Another good event, a lot of good feedback from those folks. They really do appreciate us coming out there, meeting with them, giving them an opportunity to discuss some of the issues they have in, in things that we can do for them as a city. A couple other items. One is that last Saturday, a good public service event that we held in partnership with a local business. The fire department was with Bradshaw Chevrolet doing a car seat check. A good partnership, a good turnout, even given the bad weather that was going on Saturday. But a great opportunity for our fellows out at the fire department to be able to get out into the community and with the good service that is well received, given the rate of misinstalled car seats. I think that it's pretty appropriate, and it's always well received, and people are very appreciative of the information again in that regard. Another good event for us. Another item that we're working with the public on is one of our public services, our Citizen Police Academy, which is underway. We have about fifteen participants. It's going real well. It's always well received, we always get a lot of good feedback from that. You should have at your seat, our team tribute. This is our fall issue, publication that our Communications Manager, Steve Owens, puts out. Another good job, lots of good information in there. Gives you an opportunity to take a look, see pictures of the new employees that have come on board since the last issue, some good articles. As I mentioned, one of the things that are in this particular issue is an article on workplace ethics, information about new members of our employees' families and things like that. Good information. Steve does a great job of that. As always, if you have any questions, if you have anything that you'd like to see in there, if you have any information that, that would be appropriate for that publication, let Steve know anytime you'd like to get that in there. A few calendar reminders for you, things that we have coming up. One is that, of course, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. As always, we will be turning our fountain pink for that, for that month, and it will be pink all month. So when it, when a lot looks a little red or a little pink, that's the reason why. We'd like to draw attention to that effort, and that's always a good promotion for us in that regard. Something to bring to your attention is that, beginning on October second and October third, the city was awarded a grant from Home Depot of eight thousand dollars in order to do some renovations and landscaping improvements out at Veterans Park. City staff will be going out there on the second to do some prep work and some demo work. About fifty volunteers, excuse me, thirty-five volunteers from Home Depot, along with the DAV, and some volunteers from the DAV and staff, will be working on the third to do some work out there to improve that, that facility and that park. So that activity will be taking place, like I said, October second and October third. Another calendar item is Safety Breakfast. We'll be having that on the eleventh. Seven, seven-thirties Coffee and Conversation. Please make mark your calendars to come by. It's always a real good event for us, giving us an opportunity to recognize the efforts of our employees in regards to safety for our organization and getting information in that regard. We also will be getting some information on our United Way efforts, and probably we'll see an appearance from our Green Team on our internal green efforts that we have for recycling and things like that internally. Also, Oktoberfest on the fifth. That'll be taking place on Saturday, the fifth, from ten a.m. to ten p.m. in downtown. Another good event for us, good event for our community, always well received, and we look forward to having that. That's it for my report. There are two items I would ask for council's consideration in executive session. One, a contractual matter, and one legal matter. That's two issues, two matters in executive session. One contractual, one legal.
Thanks, sir, and we appreciate the update. And as always, if you have questions or need information about anything that Mr. Sell brought for us this evening, we would urge you to contact him either that afternoon this evening or later in the week, or if you feel like it's four o'clock in the morning and he was talking.
I get those calls sometimes, yeah.
I know the administrator away, that he's gonna send it to you anytime it comes to him, and that could well be. Good luck from there. Then the matter of bold business, first of which is the second and final reading of Anexation Ordinance Number twenty-nine dash two thousand and thirteen. This is an ordinance to provide the annexation of property, of a portion of property owned by text-drawn properties in accordance located on Commerce Court by one hundred percent petition that could establish its owning classification of I-1 for said property. Mr. Pace?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We did a public planning commission meeting on September the sixteenth to hear the zoning of the property for text-drawn, this would be I-1, as far as recommended, after public hearing was held, no one spoke in favor or opposition to the request, and the planning commission unanimously recommends the zoning of I-1 to this property.
Council comes before you with that information, I want to take a motion to receive. Have a motion. Then a second floor is open for discussion. Comment? Hearing on this document.
Mr. Yarrow Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Dunham?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Halbert?
Yes.
Mayor Dunn?
Yes.
Council, we have the second and final reading of Anexation Ordinance thirty dash two thousand and thirteen. This is an ordinance to provide the annexation of properties owned by Holberson Land Company Three LLC located on Commerce Court, Commerce Drive, and sought them from running by one hundred percent petition and to establish the owning classification of C-three for said property. Mr. Pace?
The end, Mayor and Council. Public hearing was held on September the sixteenth for the planning commission. No one spoke in favor or in opposition to the request. Therefore, the planning commission does unanimously recommend for the zoning of C-three and for the construction of the Greer Main Street car wash to be relocated at this facility.
Council, entertain the motion to receive. I have a motion in the second. Floor is open for discussion. Comment? Questions? Hearing on this document.
Mr. Yarrow Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Dunham?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Halbert?
Yes.
Mayor Dunn?
Yes.
Council, I'd like to see the second and final reading of Ordinance Number twenty-two dash thirty-two dash two thousand and thirteen. This is an ordinance amending Chapter eighty-six Traffic and Vehicles, Article Four Traffic Control Signs, Signals, and Devices by adding Section eighty-six dash two sixty-eight Special Regulations or Prohibitions of Specified Classes or Sizes of Vehicles as per those imminent notices. This discussion was started at our last meeting. We've asked Mr. Holloman to join us to give us an update and some changes that have been made to that, which we were promised for second reading. That floor here is taller.
Thank you, Mayor. The major change in this particular item is adding it as a section of our, our church that was then applying that section is, with some other verbiage that went through it. The intent scale of the ordinance is that blue trucks will be prohibited on Point Set, on Highway Ten, on State Road Eighty. That, that allows anyone who has a, a general business to drop something off or pick something up from, they can come about without the authority of this, and it might be, might be molested, so it's a, a traffic control. So it doesn't really change that, but the common body of this in our ordinance in a way that it can be, um, attributed to this department, but it's another one for the agency. to a particular department, other than the Department of Labor and Public Utilities. Other questions, I'm sure, I have some. Or can the Mid-Hallway Department, yes, get me some place.
For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
Thank you.
Have a motion in a second. The floor is open for discussion. Questions? Holloman, there was a question I heard in regards to access off of Highway 290 into the port. Would you address that for us if you could?
Well, yes. And really, I want to wind them up. The intent for and its plans for access to the port simply necessitates that section has been from Highway 80. The current access on 290, probably would have already been taken out. It will be taken out, and you're not having such a range that we had on the sun. It is, like the last time I was out there, they were coming very close to getting all of the base here for that radio entrance. If you've been down there sort of toward the end of Gossenshade Road, just before the little creek there, they did have some rain space. We came and interrupted their attempts again to get that in. But that will be the only access into this property off State Route 8.
Other questions? Comments? Hearing members, don't.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Dunham?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Counsel, we have the items, new business. The first item for us this evening is the agreement of provision of fire protection, first responder services with Greenville County. Chief Harvey will address that for us.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is just a, basically a renewal of our 10-year contract with the county. The renewal is for another 10 years, and doesn't affect our contracts at all, as much as it was just mentioned in this contract also. We'd like to answer any questions. There's no changes to the contract.
Counsel, it does require action. I'll ask that someone make a motion to approve the agreement. Second, have a motion. The second floor is open for discussion. Questions of the chief?
What is this agreement? All of this agreement may have a price and purpose, is it a agreement?
We have attached this area outside of the city's limits, to provide fire protection services, but I'm wanting to bring the land one to talk about. This basically is an agreement to provide services in that area, and what the village is able to agree to, that the maintenance, if we want to build, increases that in there also.
How do we end up with an area outside of the city that we protect?
Well, it started when it blew away, basically, with what was called the name of the land in the early 80s. There was areas that were outside the city that weren't part of public service districts or county home districts. So if you're closer than you're to municipalities, which have a couple of areas, that it was to expand more. The other districts typically had the resources to expand some of those areas.
Where is this area, Greenville County?
It's on the Bonner Road area, the West Road area, Wilson Road out there, and all the area around it. That area that's outside of the city, that's now around it, that area. James Road, James Road area.
So we did receive the village from that?
Yes. Part of the village is just like the old hills.
Others?
That I agree with.
Mr. Don't?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Dunham?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
First reading of Annexation Ordinance Number 33-2013. This is an ordinance to provide the annexation of properties owned by Alzman Enterprises, LLP, located on South Island 14 and at Beyond Road by 100% petition, and to establish a zoning classification of C-3 for said properties. Mr. Pace?
Mayor and Council, again, thank you for talking to me here tonight. This is the annexation of property that is located at South Island 14, Dodge Road, and Concorde West, I'm making it for bigger. It is adjacent to the airport environment, airport makes a particular citizency. They're seeking to zone this piece. Current zoning in Greenville County of S-1 and I-1, requesting C-3 commercial. This would also place it in our employment center community, regional quarter, and superregional quarter, in our future land use plan. We will hold a public hearing for this particular case on October 21st. We have not done that yet, and that will be forthcoming, but this will be for the construction of QT Convenience Center, similar, very similar to the one that was built at Bonner, Bonner, the Hollywood 29th.
By show of hand, this evening, is the owner of the property or a representative of the owner of the property witness?
Sir?
Okay. Noted that someone is, who has not continued to speak in this program. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
Sure.
Have a motion, second. Floor is open for discussion. Questions of Mr. Pace? The owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property, would you address, counsel?
Good evening, counsel. I would say, replying to the annexation request of that property on Highway 14 and Johns Road. Actually, want to come up here and answer any questions or concerns you guys had regarding the project, because it's a trip in general. You know, we're looking forward to having this idea or any career. The first one's done great, and the new staff will be great to work with, so we're excited for another.
Counsel, questions? Comments?
When you plan on hiring it up? I think this one will be done in December. We're facing a lot of problems upfront with getting a sewer to the site. We're now bringing, working a rear CPW on running the sewer line down Johns Road. It's been told that's been known as Graniteville. And we learned that we hit granite about two feet in every boring that we drilled on that site, and ran all the way down the road. So running the sewer got tricky, and now they won't start doing it a bit trickier. But we're looking to start construction around December, with an open date of July 2014.
Suppose we can assume there'll be lots of rock in the land, even if it's not. Counsel, any questions, comments? Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Counsel, we've got a question to take it on this. How much can a site have bourbon discussion? Hearing members, don't.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Dunham?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
And the first reading of Annexation Ordinance 34-2013. This is an ordinance to provide the annexation of properties owned by Paul Quan Monastery, located in 11 Hoots Southern, Popular Drive, extension by 100% petition, and to establish a zoning classification of R-15 for said property. Mr. Pace?
Thank you, Mayor. This property currently lies within an unzoned area of Sparkville Channel. We are seeking to annex and zone this particular piece of property, R-15 residential, and place it on the future land use map as residential land use community, too. We will hold a public hearing on the 21st of October in regards to this case, also in conjunction with this before zoning the field of them, also to decide, as a use permitted by special exception, exception in a residential district, for the construction of a temple that would be constructed on this site, and therefore they would be hearing this also, and seeking their approval at the same time in conjunction with activities they're proceeding tonight. So again, Mayor and Council, that is the purpose and intent, is for construction of a Buddhist temple on this particular location.
By double hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property witness this evening? You can signify that you are at this point, you know, relax.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay. And thank you, members of the city council. My name is Dr. Gia from Alabama, OB-GYN. I am the chairman of the building committee of the 4-1 temple. About one year ago, a piece of land, 642 acre, was donated to the United Nations International Buddhist Order. And so the order was I to build a Buddhist temple here for the people in the upstate. We have about maybe 3,000 Buddhists here, and we'd be blessed so that we can have somebody donate the land to us and can build a temple. And as you know, Buddhists are very pacific, you know, or we're not. We just respect other people's religion. So we'd like to request your consideration for our request for annexation to the city council. I would like to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You'll have to see plus by. We may call in here in just a moment. Counsel, entertain a motion to receive Ordinance Number 34-2013. Have a motion, and the second floor is open for discussion. Questions of Mr. Pace?
Is that the normal zoning for churches?
Yes, ma'am, in the area, because I said the area does contain some industrial uses, but primarily residential uses, places of worship are allowed, and most of our, as a outright use. And most of our zoning classifications, however, are residential neighborhoods that have a use permitted by special exception. And they do have a list of requirements that the town manual lays out, that they have to combine with, they have childcare, or intact other facilities that's associated with that. And they are aware of those requirements, and will be needing those requirements also. But this is not unusual to that town.
Counsel, questions? Questions of the chairman of the building committee? Hearing members, don't.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Dunham?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
First reading of Ordinance 35-2013. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Jane Campbell, located at 395 Old Woodruff Road, which is C-2 commercial, to R-12 residential. Mr. Pace?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, public hearing was held on September 16th for rear planning commission. This is a zoning request to change the property from C-2 residential that has the address at 395 Old Woodruff Road. It's on the corner of Lakewood Drive and Old Woodruff Road, regonging that to R-12 residential. It is a residential structure that has been used for quite some time as a residential structure. However, in the past, it was owned, as was a number of properties in that area, to commercial, and the new owner and occupant of that was desirous to move into that residence and move into construction, and has approved for so pending the outcome of this zoning application. Planning commission did meet, no one spoke in favor or in opposition to this request, and they unanimously approved the zoning classification of R-12.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property witness this evening? The record indicating nobody said so. I'll entertain a motion to receive. Have a motion in a second. The floor is open for discussion. Questions? Mr. Pace, you said this has been a residence sometime?
Appears to have been a residence. I don't know that it has been used for commercial. And it has changed hands. And as you said, the new owner has come to us with a request to add a garage to this structure, and with C-2 zoning, one conformity, is it going to make him do something?
Is there any other reason besides construction to the rise or something like that, that would motivate folks to kind of go from C-2 back to residential?
Well...
Is there tax liabilities or differences in?
Tax liabilities may not be the best part of the session, or specifically that, but sometimes they don't do that. But in normal circumstances, however, I understand they pay cash for this structure. In normal circumstances of financing, most finance companies will not finance a residential commercial structure, because it would not be able to be constructed back as a residence. If it were destroyed, it would have to be built back as commercial property. But again, this didn't happen in this case. It's just a point that he came in for permanent, and we noticed the error, or not the error, in the situation, and highly recommend he can this process to correct that issue.
Have a motion in a second in regards to 35-2013. Other questions or comments in regards to this? Hearing members, don't.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Dunham?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Counsel, we have the first reading of Ordinance Number 36-2013. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by the Rebound Association, located at 309 Bus Point, that's straight from R and only one to C-2. Mr. Pace?
Again, Mayor and Council, public hearing was held on September 16th for planning commission. After much discussion with the planning commission, many speaking in opposition to the request, the planning commission did recommend for denial of the application to C-2. Just some background for you, informational line, as far as the presentation, staff recommendation was for approval on that, and some of the considerations that staff gave in consideration of that. Again, as you see, the property has it lies currently. There is discussions with the current property owner to subdivide this property, right along the parking area here, to the rear of the structure. The rear portion of this property, as you see here, the rear portion would remain as R and 1 residential. They would create a lot of sufficient size that would meet the zoning requirements of 9,000 square feet, and want to maintain that for the construction of a single family dwelling on that lot. That's still in the transition mode, and will have that issue at this business before council. A separate reading will have that issue corrected, and we'll make that to you as a presentation. Again, the front portion of this property containing the structure and the parking lot is what they were seeking to rezonate primarily to commercial. Just some things that we presented to the planning commission in the consideration. Through your comprehensive plan that was adopted by city council, and the planning commission on, in 2010, recommended for a neighborhood corridor on Point Set Highway interchange, which is approximately 250 feet in width, running the full length of Point Set. And even in our example, through the comprehensive plan for neighborhood corridor, which our example wasn't West Point Set Street, that calls for methods of uses along this corridor of the N-C2, along with residential comparisons that are in the area. Some of the zonings that are in the area, you know, a bit more master. We will see the zoning map as it reflects the properties currently in the area, have some that are C-2. the properties currently in the area, have some that are C two, some that are OD, and some that are remaining residential in that area. There is some even vacant properties that is all in two along Point Set in this immediate area. However, some of these properties may contain residential structures or businesses, as you see, as a lot has changed and come forth in this area. It also, as council desires, quite some time, they've created highway transitional overlay district along West Point Set Street from Miller Street to Memorial Drive. This was expanded upon some years, few years back, again, to include areas of North Main Street as a highway transitional, again, knowing that it is what it is, it is transitional district. Just to make you aware, also, I wasn't quite aware of the fourth and Baptist Association building just constructing, as you can very much see that the entrances are here and here and that it does have rooms or offices divided up with corridors. There are restrooms located inside and an assembly area on one side of that flooring also. But Mayor Council, again, this was recommended for denial by the planning commission of C two and therefore bringing that recommendation to you and we'd be glad to entertain questions that you may have.
By my double hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property witness this evening? Let it be noted that they are. entertain a motion to receive first reading of ordinance number thirty-six dash two thousand and thirteen.
I make a motion that we receive the recommendation from the planning commission, but with the amendment that allowing the change to OD.
Have a motion to receive with an amendment, mayor effect. That's open for discussion. Questions of Mr. Pace?
I think one thing that when the lady was there making her presentation, she was a little bit confused about why she thought it would die and then come back and that's that. So I think maybe it might be good to explain that to her, maybe that situation.
Pace, you want to give us an oversight in terms of the planning process and how that comes to council solely as a recommendation?
Yes, sir. I think this is a specific point that it is, it was denied as a recommendation to council, but council still has that ultimate authority. If council still desires to maintain the denial of the request at said time, it would be one year from that process forward before any zoning classification could be brought back to the board or at council. So that was confusing. It had my, it all began with recommendation from the planning commission, you are the approving authorities on that, the canonical authorities on that request and that's in one year period we're starting from.
So we could concur with that recommendation if we chose to do so. We can override if we choose to do so by a two-thirds majority of the council.
Yes, sir.
Or we have the option to do it.
Yes, sir. Then you have the option.
Okay.
Well, I think that it's important that a city like we're listening to its people because your people are your most important resource, you know, and when you have people that are internet with, and I know that this is one where to make excuses, but it's important that when people have invested their money and, you know, and their time, you know, in building a home for the family and that, then we take that into consideration, you know, and keep it a zone residential. Because that means a lot for someone to build, you know, a family and that. Because you don't want to, if we change and you change OD and they have a bookstore and it doesn't make it, then you don't know what's going to come in there. You know, you really don't. And I think that when they put that time and that money in there, that it's important that, you know, that we leave, listen to them. And I think, you know, that, like I said again, that people are our most important resource, no matter whether we have a church in the community or businesses or whatever, it all comes back down to people, you know. If you have church, you need people. If you have businesses, you need people. And people watch how you do and how you do things and how we as a council do things and they're, you know, they're in tune with how we treat people, you know. And we've had a pretty good thing about treating people and with the internet today, people do research and they watch and see how we make decisions and how we treat our people. I think it's important that when you got as many residents around that property as we have, that it's important that we take, you know, that care was into consideration.
If it is, if it does go to office district, is there any way that there can be guidelines? I mean, you have to have an approval for a certain type of business to go in there? Is there any guidelines on that? Or I know she said, Ms. Williams mentioned quite a few different types of businesses that could go in there, but if someone actually came in, is there any guidelines that you could...
There is a list of uses permitted outright uses. Again, those being accounting, advertising, banking, broadcasting, studio brokerage, employment agency, insurance, nursing home and assisted living, which has other requirements from top of it, professional offices, real estate, research or accessory buildings, those are issues that are outright permitted. Any other uses would have to have a special exception by the Board of Zoning Appeals. Now, a lot of those cemetery, childcare, church, those have a lot of other restrictions in the zoning code that go with those. So again, the outright uses would be permissible and those are primarily office type uses, professional.
And I made that last one where the conversation, where they're saying that they, I know the building that's there definitely looks like an office. I mean, you know, it does not look like an office, like a home, like a residential home. I mean, you know, I can't, I mean, square to either anything inside that building.
Uh, technically, I didn't, I didn't read the...
Yeah, well, I really looked that up. I'm sure it's been with myself, but anyway.
Yeah, we got a lot of that answer.
Oh, okay.
Well, I want to explain my thinking. I, you know, I agree with Councilman Griffin that our best resource is our folks and I do think that the city has taken into account all citizens because we have identified Point Set as a transitional area, but we do not want it to lose that residential feel. And with the overlay district that we have, if there's ever any modification of the exterior of the building, it's going to look like a residence. And although you do have a lot of permitted uses, really, the use of that building is going to be dictated by the size of the open space around the building because you got to have so many parking spaces and so many for handicap and then you get into other issues. So, you know, I can't see that the, if the building sold and the owners had any more impact on that area than there is now. And another thing that I was thinking about today is that we as a city, we're the winners now and we've allowed it to go on, but it's gone since, I guess, the fifties that this was zoned residential multifamily.
Yes, sir. First, it was zoned both by fifty-three and fifty-four.
And so it's a not conforming use. So if the current owner sells the property, the only use could be residential multifamily. Well, of course, the building is not set up for that, which is obvious, it's office. And if we, the correction never was made in the zoning. So to me, bordering on regulatory taking value and that's a mistake that I think falls squarely in the life of the city. There's other, you know, even if the zoning isn't changed, there's other things that can be placed there and that's multifamily housing. So there's, you know, there's good in the head about all aspects, but I think, you know, as said in my motion indicated, I think the best use is to zonify property. And that's what I mean.
There was a mention of a possible lapse of conditions that had been existing for that building. Is that true with it? Was it shut down for a period of time where those things lapsed?
To my knowledge, there has not been, again, one thing we look at are these utilities, as utilities maintained throughout that process and if they have been, then we would still consider it to be an occupied, useful structure. And I don't have any idea whether that association is still using it or not. I have seen it leaving the way up from time to time on capital requirements, but I'm not sure for that fact.
You mentioned off the carding out that the back portion for residential, that's not part of the business.
Now, at the next meeting, if it goes that far, if we come up with a second reading of it, at that time, we will have, they will have adequate time to supply a survey and the division of that property and the tax cost of movement that we assume would be assigned to that would be the same as it currently is for front and therefore will not require any type amendment to the rezoning ordinance.
From the line of questioning, this may be a good time to ask the owner or the representative of the owner of the property if you'd like to address council, we may have questions with respect to you standing close by. If someone wants to speak in regards to some questions that have risen regarding the facility square footage usage, if somebody would like to address council in that regard.
Thank you, Mayor. The square footage of that facility is two thousand nine hundred square foot. It's been used, we're using that with the last month, we tried, the deal was the end in July and we had a bunch of in huge young people that are from Oakdale University and did acts of kindness, needed service throughout our career. We're utilized, we're there every day, all day long. Citizen Tom Caps, associate from Minister Mission's director, uses that facility. I use that facility, we're not there, they're leaning out. We have equipment there that we know where to take to the locations. It's very important for me to know what's in that building, we all heard fire stores and pipe breaking, whatever, so we keep a very close eye on that. We're there and if there's something working on, we're paying our power bill, we're doing all the things to get good fire utilities for your buildings. So it's most definitely how that...
So the utilities are still on the same level?
Yes, ma'am.
And the proposed use of this building is not by you, it's by the next buyer, basically, and that is for a bookstore?
No, sir, that was, that was one of, the contract we had on the use of that deed, but the doctor ruined last time that was withdrawn.
But if it's zone OD, the buyer is good with it.
I think so. I believe that.
Not good.
Are you good? No, sir, they would not be able to allow, we would not allow for a bookstore to be in there under OD, sir. OD was not allowed for retail purposes.
Okay, so you kind of went around it, but in other words, the buyer that wants bookstore and OD wants book?
Exactly, exactly. But we had, we had the contract signed with check with the earnings money and that's over there.
If it changes hands even under OD, in your estimation, are there substantial upgrades that will have to be done before it will be occupied?
No, the building...
I was asking, we...
Mr. Davis, I don't think I can answer that question. I'm not there inside the building. Fire marshal has routinely on annual basis done the fire inspections of that building and as far as it is compliant with all current codes, there may be some modifications such as a handicap ramp or something else that I can't remember if it has steps in the back or if it's front or whatever, has a wrap in the back. It sounds like it would meet all requirements, but I'm not wanting to speak to that. That would be the fire marshal's responsibility.
Especially you have a tipping point though, that if modifications are made to the building to a certain point of the value of the building, then it would have to be brought up to new code standards as opposed to...
That is the right question.
And that would be applicable as well to issues regarding separation and...
To the separation if there was, if mixed up uses within the building, however, all of the uses, even as independent office, I don't think that requirement would comply because it is same law use of this to...
In addition to that exterior separation, which is in our new ordinance in regards to the separation of residential from a commercial, that correct as well, it would be triggered at some point by modifications to the building?
By modifications, yes, sir. I believe those are things that should have a best...
Let's flip that around then. For that building to be used as a residence, what exterior modifications or interior modifications would have to be made?
Again, I don't know, it maybe can be used for that or maybe not, I don't know, counsel. You've seen the background of the layout of the interior of the structure, personally, it wouldn't work for me as a residence, but it could be construed and used as a multifamily residence due to it does have multi facilities inside it and minor modifications, I think it could be outsourced. So it would be maybe dining facilities and bathroom facilities for each tenant within that.
Those modifications would trigger any of the exterior separation or other things that would apply to commercial, correct?
Yes.
So anything could be done like it is a residence as opposed to a commercial, I think, correct? I'll just, my questions to Mr. Pace, we've got director from the Superior Division Commission, Baptist Association. Have a motion in a second. Any further questions, discussion? This comes to you as a motion with an amendment to change the zoning classification to OD.
Mr. Mayor, let me say, in my opinion, either way this zoning comes down, I think it's a tough, somebody, obviously, somebody's going to be unhappy. If it stays residential, I don't foresee that the existing building would be a normal residence. It could be converted into a residence and it could be livable. The times I've been in there, it's kind of sterile, you know. If it's rezoned OD, there is of course no guarantee that it would be a low impact office that goes in there. It could be a high traffic type business. I see the pluses and minuses to both, but I believe the residential would require a lot more heavy lifting on the buyer, I mean, it's going to have to be somebody with a department that would buy it and make it a residence. It has existed a long time, basically as an office, for better or worse. Obviously, the Williams would see both moving around this door to the... I believe that the ultimate decision, in my opinion, will probably be to leave it as a residence, although I see the value to changing it to OD right now. But knowing that particular corner, I understand the corridor or point set, knowing that particular corner... Knowing that particular corner, I believe, in all honesty, that the people that live in that area with no guarantee as to what might eventually locate there, if we make it OD, it's going to be a problem for them in the future. You know, they're always going to be wondering if a bookstore fails there, or whatever fails there. OD is wide open enough to where it could be something that is not friendly to residential area that is as compact as it is. That's just my opinion.
I think what Mr. Aaron Wood said about the fact that it is a small space, and there's not much room to get tons of cars in that area, and I think the area would kind of seek to the fact that it is a commercial or OD in this case, because there's no backyard. I mean, it's just, it's all pavement, and there's parking spaces wanted to be there. The fact that they're willing to commit a portion of that property to residential use seems to kind of allow, although it's been used as that office district or, or nonconforming office district, it's really the same thing. It's been there since the 60s, it seems more consistent with the current use of the building to, to go to the office in that case.
If you like the Rob's comments, let's, let's revisit this one time. There was a list that was read that had a lot of different items on that, different potential uses for that. If the building is modified beyond what we think is 50% of estimated value, or the building were cordoned out, any of these structural or use would have to be totally compliant with our new regulations in regards to setbacks, stormwater, separation from other buildings, parking based on occupancy, all of those things on, on that particular site. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. And in addition to, as the public transitional planning, even if it were an office, it would have to be constructed back with residential character to that building. And we still have to have picture rooms and those type things in order for it to be compliant with the public transitional overlay districts this and that area.
This part in the rear.
Part in the rear, and a part in the front of the structure, yeah.
So if somebody were to, let's say, modify the building beyond 50%, or take it, any type of new business in there, it would have to fit the character of the neighborhood that runs in the residential world?
Yes.
Others?
Well, I know, as, as we sit here at the council today, what you're saying is true, but as the years go on and somebody else is sitting in these seats, you could very well have a case like it is now. If zone residential, you got an office on there, even though it's all residential people, you say it's nonconforming, you know, so who's to say in, in the future that, that they have to deal with something that's, that's nonconforming, and they can't do a single matter? And, and like I said, I think it's, it's so important, because you've got families there, you know, that, that what we do, we do look after families, no matter what, and everything else, it's, it works out, taking care of the families. People invest a lot of time and energy, you know, to, to build their homes and to, to redo those homes. I mean, you take a home that's fallen down, and then you bring it up to, you know, to where you get it on, on National Historic Master, and I think it's just important that we look after families.
While, while a use, maybe grandfather is nonconforming going forward, comes the going of after and before, at least the planning position would be held, and before this is the council?
It can continue as a nonconforming use, however, it cannot be grown or added on to as a nonconforming use. Nonconformity will not allow expansion in any way of the, or of current use.
Even if you have to change the tenant or homeowner?
On the interior, if you try to grow the footprint of the building or anything like that, it's nonconforming, you can't grow nonconforming. You can't make it more nonconforming.
Does the nonconforming approval transfer with the property?
Yes, if it's made an office and then still a lower tenant, that, that stays with it.
It's within that OD category. So anything that Mr. Pace mentioned that is possible in an OD, as long as the structure, property doesn't change significantly, those businesses can operate in that manner on that property if it remains nonconforming.
But it's residential, man.
But it's a nonconforming OD use.
That's what I'm saying, does that pass on to the owner?
Yes, sir.
So they can still leave it zoned residential, or the owner can operate a business up there?
Yes.
So, so that, what type of business? Does it, I mean, whether it's...
Often, it's primarily been the usual office, and that would be following the OD guidelines, that we would continue that nonconformity under the OD guidelines.
So we told them in 61, this is nonconforming as an office, and it's always going to be an office, or is it wide open to any business?
It is, it would be wide open to office uses, not retail components of any business. You'd be allowed to be functioning there.
So is there a list of those office, I mean...
Yes, yes, that's what we, we read a couple of times.
So it would be whatever comes under the OD, but it's clearly allowed into the R zone?
Exactly.
It would change, not, nothing really would change, but, I mean, you could buy it, you could use it, if it was OD, you could buy it, put an office in there, you could buy it as residential, and still put office in there, any of those that you mentioned, right?
The only thing, the only thing it prevents is that if it remains as it is, and somebody is interested in that property as a nonconforming use OD still, that they could not make any modifications to change the building, because we don't allow them to expand a nonconforming use. So even some improvements that they may want to make may not be able to be made, because it would be expanding the nonconforming use. If the OD is changed, it opens it up so that if changes are made, that those would be reviewed according to the guidelines that are in place in the overlay, in the transitional overlay. So there are some improvements that could be made, where, if I'm not mistaken, that could not be made if it remains as it is, a nonconforming use.
That, that is correct.
You're talking about interior office?
No, no, exterior possession.
If you try to grow the footprint of the building or the grounds, frame, and they're moving on.
So in reality, it could be closed for office use, even though it's residential, and even though it's classified as residential, is that correct?
Yes.
There's always office use still in there, but...
Right, as long as there's continuous use as, as it's being used now. If that ceases for a 90-day period, then it reverts to the RM1, and that's the only use for that property, unless it's reused.
So if we change the zoning to office district and it changes hands, then there are going to be certain things that we're going to ask them to do to bring, to kind of shake up the property with buffers and different things like that that aren't shared yet, is that...
Yes, yes, they would have to strain the property from residential, but they want to divide it to in the rear, which will allow construction of another senior family residence, and from the upper tenant residence on the west side of the property also, leaving strain the parking area, but that's such use from that, not there.
So that, I mean, that seems to me, based on, you know, what you both said, the real, the only real benefit to changing the zoning here is that we get, you know, more city and the next tenant's involvement in that property if they, if they have an office for them, something that gets underneath that zoning control.
Yes.
You can't restrict what kind of office stays in there. You just see their guidelines about the buffers and things, is that what you're saying?
If it's rezoned, they've got to have the buffers that will have to be installed.
But what's going to be OD, you know, with, without rezoning? I mean, just here, the whole control there is actually...
And it removes the nonconforming component from it.
Right, exactly.
Mr. Benson, nonconforming use only applies to a higher use, with us in the pillar use?
No.
So it's like residents on a C2 block, you know, nonconforming?
If it's been maintained as a residence throughout the period and has not become vacant, then it can continue to be a residence.
But as a nonconforming use?
But as a nonconforming use. So we have quite a few, you know, we have quite a few of those, and if they want to expand them...
Thanks on the matter you shared tonight, I mean, you, you have several of the homes that were, you know, next door to our C2, but they're, they're residents, correct?
Yes, that is true.
So if they chose to expand them, that would, they would lose the nonconforming use?
They would not be allowed.
That would not be used, allowed to use as a residence?
They could expand.
Could expand, could expand.
Yes, they could build a special structure or anything else until they stopped and rezoned it to a residential, for some protection. Back years ago, obviously, there were some zoning blanket issues that were done for areas like that, and I think that for whatever reason, they got approved, without uses being what they should be. I think we see that quite often since the 50s and 60s, that happened. And the nonconformity is a part of the old lips as it currently is, and that gives us the regulatory authority to make sure that it doesn't continue in that manner, or it's not expanded in that manner.
The ordinance 362013 comes with a motion to receive with an amendment, change the zoning classification to OD, that is seconded, forward and open for discussion. Further discussion or comment in regards to 362013.
This looks like two readings.
Yes, it is. Take a look at part two.
On the second reading, that's when the residential law gives the information...
We don't have, we put them documentation, and we'll present that to you if that means...
It's sort of a, like a flip of the coin on this, with you, you know, saying that if it's really staying like it is, it can still be office, you know, if you change it to OD, it, it gives them a little bit more leeway to have their buffers and, you know, more up to standard than, you know, if somebody just comes in there and does an office, you know, kind of...
Well, that, that goes to Mr. Griffin's point, that, that really, either way, I'm not sure that it's going to impact residents as much as, as I would thought. What you really got to have in order to remain residential is to have a serious buyer come in and want to rezonate residential, tear it down, build a house. Otherwise, it's going to stay an office building, I feel sure.
Others? Or this comes with an amendment, voting affirmative for the OD, as opposed, which would be the recommendation denied, clear?
It comes with a record, it comes with an amendment regarding in the affirmative for the amendment, or against the amendment.
Yeah, I did, okay. 362013 comes with a motion for an amendment to change the zone classification to office district, and so... Please, I'm voting to uphold there, you have the commission's recommendation plus the amendment, the amendment overrides the recommendation.
But there will be a second hearing.
Exactly.
There'll be a second week.
Second week, yes. Yeah, one, reading itself, yeah.
Mr. Dunn?
Mr. Aaron Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
No.
Mr. Dillman?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
No.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Council Executive Session, we have two items for consideration this evening. We have one contractual and one legal. I'm going to hear a motion for a executive session. Somebody, Mr. Duncan?
Mr. Aaron Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Executive Session, we've considered two contracts, I mean, two matters, one contractual, one legal, taking no action in regards to either one of the a motion to come out of the executive sessions, that will, that will take a motion on second. Mr. Dunn?
Mr. Aaron Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
That's German.